First up.
Oh, yeah. Big chunk, yeah.
I'm at the bottom of my vest here. Are you sure? With lip gloss or because I can cover you there? No? Okay.
All right, ready? All right, good afternoon. I'll call the work session of Todd County Board of Commissioners to order on August 25th, 2020. The meeting is not open to the public, however, they can view online at the address that is posted on the web, I'm assuming. And present, all commissioners of Todd County are present. And with us today is Morrison County Commissioner Mike Lemire, Administrator Deb Gruber, and Morrison County Engineer Steve Bukowski, present from Todd County. Our all commissioners, obviously, our auditor treasurer, our coordinator, Nancy Eulenkamp, ditch inspector Lou Nasca from Soil and Water, county engineer Lauren Felbaum, and online listening is the news media Karen from the News Herald. So, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and veritable in its essence.
Hey, welcome guests. Our meeting today was called a special work session to discuss the recent diversion of water from a project in Morrison County into affecting some landowners from Todd County. So, I don't know who wants to start the dialogue. Deb, would you like to?
Sounds good. First of all, thanks for having us. It's been a long time since I've seen you, so it's good to be here. We wanted to talk a little bit about what's happening in Morrison County. I think you are aware of issues that have arisen over the years with Lake Shamana flooding that they have. There are a couple of different components to that. Clearly, the current state and elevation of the water within the basin. And then a separate conversation or component to that is the inflows. And so what we're here today to talk about is what we have looked into or talked about doing, which was some diversion of inflow water. This isn't about the lowering of the lake. That would be a LID, a Lake Improvement District initiative. Ultimately, though, I think similar paths are proposed to be taken when it comes to that. And that's why we're here, because it does eventually impact County ditch 41 in Todd County. But we're really here talking about the project that the county is more involved in, which is the inflow project. And Steve's gonna be the, well, he is the brains of the operation when it comes to talking about the technical components of this, not me. So I'm gonna...
Very scary.
I'm gonna let him talk about it. But there are a couple of different components, so I wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of that. I believe the Lake Improvement District had spoken with you previously, and I, you know, I'm not exactly sure what was presented at that time. But the component we're talking about is that inflow and diverting inflow to that, so...
Well, it's been quite a few years, and we were, I think Barb was talking before the meeting four years ago.
At least.
That we were informed, at least by the LID, of what they wanted to do. Well, I don't know if they were a LID at that time, but they were an association or whatever, and came here and met with us, talked about what they were proposing as a project. We had a lot of questions for them, and I believe they had signatures from landowners at that time. Am I correct?
Correct. I think Lauren was at the meetings and Nancy.
And so we just listened, had some questions for them, and then they left. And I think the project kinda died out or something, and then they formed a LID and then have been talking with you people. I believe they have, if I'm reading through the record right, they have established a budget, and I think you guys have approved that.
Well, there's been a number of different
Okay.
components over the years. So initially, when the Lake Improvement District was taking on that mission of lowering the water, they had a path, an outlet path, that they were looking to divert water through. And that's, that impacted Todd County. And so, yeah, I remember meetings early on about that, Barb also. And then that path wasn't the path that they chose to advance, to further advance the engineering and the discussion and stuff like that. They went a different route and have been pursuing that for the last couple of years to try to divert water out of the opposite side of the, I think it's opposite side of the lake, right? Yeah. And then they've recently learned that that project isn't feasible due to very various different reasons when it comes to property owners and some different components. It's their project, it's their role to look at that lowering the lake. And so I don't know all the specific details of that. But since that's been abandoned, they're looking at what other options are there. And this has resurfaced as an option on this side of the lake. And so that's why that conversation is being, is now, you know, surfacing again, or resurfacing. But with that, in kind of a little bit of a separate avenue, we're looking, inflows continues to be a discussion. Well, there's water, obviously, running into the lake, and where are those inflows coming in? And what can be done, if anything, to try to curb that, to not add to the issue of the existing high water? And so that's when conversations were had with Steve, and he looked at what possibilities there could be. And talking with the board said, you know what we could, we could ask? Let's see once what questions could be, or what issues are out there when it comes to inflows? And if there's any opportunities to divert that so as to not increase the issue when it comes to water in Lake Shamana. Not lowering the lake, that's the LIDS project, but the increase of the inflows. So, yeah, I don't know if I wanna turn over to you to explain kinda what we're...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. I was wondering, Chris, could you put up the study that was done by... Yeah, and the, you know, of course, everybody's aware that Lake Shamana's running into high water issues. And this was a, this was a third-party independent study that was put together by the Lake Association a number of years ago. And it looked at what's been happening to the lake over a long period of time. If you could scroll down to that graph. There you go. So, they looked at, you know, the DNR has been monitoring the ordinary high water level of Lake Shamana for many years, all the way back to the 50s. And as you're coming into the 50s, you can see how, where those ordinary highs were. They were, some of them, just, you know, less than 1271. And they've monitored that, and they have a lot of data points throughout all of those years. And although it varies up and down, this graph really shows the trend that is occurring on Lake Shamana. It's a closed basin, so it doesn't have a, an open outlet, an open channel outlet. It's utilizing aquifer, evaporation, or that type of way to release water. And so as you look at this now, as we get, you get into these final, or the years we have right now, we start to see periods of time, extended periods of time, where it's starting to exceed the ordinary high water level. And the highest was this spring at three feet over ordinary high. And so the conditions out there are continuing to get worse. And, you know, that's really getting a lot of people trying to figure out things that can be done and what we can possibly do to help to try to keep that closer to the ordinary high water level. This has been really exasperated too over the last, I think, the last six years out of seven. The annual precipitation for each of those years was in the top third of the last 30 years, with 2019 being the worst of it, at 38.4 inches, which is a full 12 inches over what would be the average annual precipitation for that area. And so it's quite a large watershed that contributes to Shamana. Got a lot of water that's been contributing to the lake over the last number of years. Of course, the aquifer probably fully recharged and now getting much more runoff due to those circumstances. Well, with these folks that have been, you know, working to try to figure out, is there something we can do? They call it shut off the faucet. Is there a way we can try to keep this situation from getting worse while the LID works on their project, trying to develop and permit and fund their project, where over time they can start drawing down the lake level to bring it closer to the ordinary high? And so they came to the county board with a, and made a presentation. The presentation, they'd been working with private vendors, this task force, on what they possibly could put together. They'd been working with our Soil and Water Conservation District to see what they could permit. And the project that kind of came to the surface is one where we would try and... There's two main drainage ways that contribute into Lake Shamana. Both are culverted through our County Road 203. And what the proposal was is to try and divert water upstream of those two culverts and bring it to the west and discharge it into the Fish Trap Creek and then through the system that I believe you've heard from the LID about, their same, their same direction or their same way of discharging. If you'd go to the plans that then, Chris, I'd appreciate that, the next... So, we, the county board was interested in trying to support and work with the group that came to them. I think they feel their obligation to try and help with this situation. It's definitely devastating to some folks. And so we brought on Bernza McDonald to help us with looking at what could feasibly be done. And the project that we're looking at trying to bring together, and we've been... It was about the middle of June when this was, it was first brought to the county board. And so, and that's the time that they gave direction that we could start working and seeing whether we could help with this. So, it's actually moved pretty rapidly with all the things that have to be looked at in trying to permit and figure out how this may work and try to deal with property owners. But the proposal that we've focused in on is that we would set up two sump areas with detention basins at each sump in front of those two main drainage ways into Shamana. Culvert 2 would be pumped in a 2,900-foot, 12-inch discharge pipe by a 15-horsepower, submersible, variable-frequency drive pump to a larger, to the larger detention basin at Culvert 1, where then with a 30 horsepower, a variable-frequency drive, we would bring it along the right-of-way in that 12-inch pipe and down shortway, the 30th Avenue, which is a township road, to the existing ditch that then goes to the west through Highway 10 and dumps into Fish Trap Creek. The variable-frequency drive is a very, is an important aspect of the whole project in that it allows, it allows you to adjust your pumping rates to what conditions may be. So if you had flow in those pipes or, and water in those detention basins, sizing those detention basins have to be based on when the pumps kick in, they need to, they need to have a long enough cycle time so they don't burn out. And so if those detention basins are full, your discharge ditch could be low, and you could discharge at its highest capacity, which is 1750. The, is calculated right now, just about four cubic feet per second. And so we, we were able to obtain right-of-way on Culvert 1 for the additional space that we'd need in order to build an adequate detention basin. At Culvert 2, we are having some issues with the property owner, but when County Road 203 was originally constructed, there was extended rights of way that was acquired right up to that culvert. And we have designed this so that we can fit it within that existing right-of-way, but we continue to try and negotiate some type of an arrangement with that property owner so that we can expand that basin on a smaller footprint. The proposal's been submitted for, and is under review by Soil and Water Conservation Service in our district. And so that's happening. And so we have a project that we believe we could put together and make work. And now the issue is that what will it take for us to properly be able to discharge to the Fish Trap Creek in County ditch 41? And so I made contact with Nancy, oh, probably three, four weeks ago. And then Deb and Chris have met, and we wanted to come and explain what we're trying to do here and see if we could answer your questions and see if you could give us some advice and help on how we could proceed to try and move forward with getting approval to discharge to, through County ditch 41.
Well, this is Commissioner Becker's district, most of it, I think, a little bit in line, but I'm not sure. But most of her district, and she's got the constituents who are concerned about the issue, so I'll let her address. We have some questions that we have prepared, and she has her own, I'm sure, so, go ahead.
I guess, and I've talked with Lou and Nancy also about some of their concerns with the ditching. Do you guys wanna go from there? I know, I have landowners that are very concerned, landowners that are concerned what's gonna happen to their property once this water hits it. This is a very small ditch. I was out to one of their places last evening. The culvert going through his driveway is very, very small. They were getting stuck with the lawnmower, which is when you opened your ditch to the Todd County, Morrison County line. They're receiving a lot of water from just that, and that's no pumping yet. And if you follow the railroad tracks along, there's meadows with big bales of hay sitting in there. If this water all comes through there, what's gonna happen with these meadows? I guess that's my major concern is, you know, what's gonna happen to the land in Todd County? And I think Lou and Nancy, you probably have other concerns you can reach out to.
Well, I can just speak to, these questions we came up with, or we discussed a little bit yesterday to have...
Lou, can you pull the microphone next to you, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. All right, well, I know we came up with these questions yesterday, and a lot of that will address what you're speaking on here, Barb. If these questions are answered, it will give us a lot, give the commissioners and everyone else a lot more to hash over and to think about in terms of how it will impact our landowners.
So, County ditch 41 is a large ditch system, but the waterway getting to County ditch 41 is not. So it's actually, for me, it would be more the concern of those landowners who are not in the benefited area of 41 or on the ditch system of 41. You know, there, that's who the water has to go through first.
From where it leaves Morrison County to it gets to ditch 41.
Yes. Because ditch 41 is a very large, is a large system.
Do you have any pictures of that?
Do you wanna see the picture of the one specific landowner or the actual GIS viewer?
Where is that?
Well, that, where is that?
That's one specific landowner.
Nancy, do we have the one of the aerial with the colored lines?
Yep.
Yeah, and that's very, very close to his buildings. And I believe that was just taken, was it yesterday or the day before?
I'm not sure. I think that was actually the 14th.
Okay.
The 14th is when that was taken.
Okay, I was there yesterday, last evening, and the water is still high.
So this is, this is Joe's property. So that's it. This is where the water goes through...
Let's say the last name so we know what, who...
Jose.
Okay, because I don't think they know, maybe so.
So, the water comes through here, through his driveway, and then exits down here, and then from there, then it makes its way to the railroad track and then across to County ditch 41.
That big pond area, is that his own pond, natural pond?
That pond there actually was a project done in cooperation with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. I'm not sure of the year it was done, but I believe it was back in the late 90s. It was done in cooperation with U.S. Fish and Wildlife for Wildlife Habitat.
Okay, thank you.
Let me go a little bit clearer. This is Joe's.
So, this is Joe's, and then you can see where the waterway comes in from here and where it goes down and then hits Fish Trap Creek here, and then goes across, and the railroad track is here, and then this becomes County ditch 41 beyond that.
Nancy, where that culvert goes across a railroad track, how big a culvert is that? We were there last night. It's not a big culvert. It's a small culvert.
I have to go on to my...
Do you have any idea, Lauren?
I have no idea. We don't have records of that. Nancy, do you have a aerial width, kinda to give the rest of the board members, where the Morrison County line is, Todd County line, where their project starts and stops, and the distance then from, from where the county ditch starts?
If you just slide that map over, can you catch it?
No, it doesn't go that far.
Oh, but it's just right on.
Yep, it's just right on the edge there. Let me see if the LID had a...
Oh, it's the first place from the Morrison County line.
Here it is. I got one, Lauren. So, right here's Joe. Yep. And right there's the line, Morrison line. And this was Cass County. No.
Or is that, our line is just on the other side of 10, or?
Oh, sorry, Morrison line's right here.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So this is that Cass County lake they originally were gonna run their project through, and then down this way. And now they're, they've changed that.
And the ditch they cleaned out goes right directly? And that's the ditch that's bringing the excess water right now with no pumping into it?
Right. Because that is south of...
They cleaned it to the Todd County line.
That's south of this line, correct?
South of 41, yes.
The task force, where the people that initiated the repair of that private ditch through Morrison County and then into Todd County, then that was again, the work was by private landowners to repair that. Because it's cleaned further than the county line. It comes into your county where it's been repaired. And, you know, and I understand, you know, those concerns, they're very valid and they need to be addressed. We haven't, we haven't put a lot into evaluation of the ditch system because we really wanted to have a project that we know we could make work. And so that is something that we have to do. Of course, when you do a repair on a ditch, and then you get a, I believe they had a three-and-a-half-inch rain event in just a few hours. Again, it was a pretty massive rain event that generated that, you know, what those pictures are showing is what I believe is where that's coming from.
These pictures are, were not with the rain event. The one that Chris has is, but these are not. This, this one is actually from 2017, because that was the last GIS flyover. This one is current, May 2020.
I mean, the picture that...
Right.
Are you, are you talking about, because 2017, of course, it hadn't been cleaned yet. It hadn't been repaired. The first one you had where it was...
One right here is May 2020.
That one right there.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's the one I was referring to. Do you know when that was taken?
I believe I was told by Zetas that it was August 14th when they took that photo.
Of this year.
Of this year, yes.
And I believe that was following that big rain event, which was a, quite a large amount of rain in a very short period of time. So, I mean, whether the ditch had been repaired or not, obviously, it probably would be quite as bad, but it probably, you'd still have some, you'd still have some stress. And whenever you do a repair, you have, you've made that ditch as efficient as it's going to be. Now, as time goes on and it revegetates and it again starts to not contribute as efficiently as it does right after the repair.
No, I was there yesterday afternoon, and where he normally mows lawn, they still couldn't mow lawn. And that was yesterday.
Yeah, I can believe that. And I think that the LID and that group is trying to work with the Zetas to see if there's some type of action they can do to help him so that those type of situations are not common if they, if this proceeds. I think they're trying to, I think they're trying to help where they can do some erosion control and protection. I don't know if there's some things they can do to maybe improve. Obviously, there, it looks like there's something caught up on the discharge point. There's something they can do to move that more efficiently. But, you know, those are very legitimate, and I think they would have to be addressed. And I guess our real question is, you know, is there, is there so much opposition you don't even wanna consider a petition? Because that would be our next step. We would have to expend, I think, some fairly substantial resources to evaluate the system, that it can handle it, that there isn't gonna be those kind of damages to property owners if we institute this. The thing that I like about it is that there can be conditions set on this, on when this can pump, how much it can pump. It's variable, and it can, it can, it's very accommodating to being adjusted. If the ditch is low and the detention basins have filled, that would be probably the time that you wanna, we'd want to pump heavy because one of the things we're trying to do is de-water, and the reason we can permit it is because de-watering is the exception to WACA. We wanna de-water part of that, of that watershed that is upstream, that those swampy low areas, de-water them so that when you get a big event, there's storage for it. And it doesn't all just run off and end up in the lake.
Well, I think our key questions here, and Barb and I and Chris have talked quite a bit about this a little bit on, you know, the landowners, how are they being notified and adjacent landowners? And because we haven't done any of that as a board, that I'm aware of, or Soil and Water, or ditch, have you notified? So our question is, what, how are we handling the landowners, number one? And number two, you hit it, Steve, is can the system handle the water? Which I'm not sure of, before it gets to ditch 41, I don't know how many miles that is. And I'm not sure ditch 41 can even handle it. But I think we need to be concerned, and especially Barb and her district or constituents need to know about this project and how it's proceeding. And I don't think they have been notified, if I'm correct. Am I correct, Barb, or?
Well, and I agree with you, Dave, because I think that first meeting, we were notified, we were called, what? At eight o'clock at night, and the meeting was the next morning? I think that was the first notification. And I think Nancy and Lou listened into that meeting?
That was a LID meeting.
That was a LID meeting, okay.
We wanna really be careful on the two different projects and what they're doing. You know, ours is about a third, third of what theirs is.
I think...
And, you know, the LID has been working their efforts for quite a few years here. And the county board, we're talking mid-June of this year. To even have the concept that we could work within, you know, six weeks is pretty fast-track. And once we had that, we made contact with Todd and wanted to have our conversation. So we're, it's not like we're trying to leave you out, but we, you know, it's kind of a catch-22. What do you have? Come and talk to you before we start and don't have anything to tell you? Or have something that we can talk about, and that's kind of the direction we went.
Mr. Chair, part of what answers those questions, really, we look to statute. And I know I had, Kurt Dieter can be on a call too to just guide us all, because we're all drainage authorities. We do the... be on a call too, to just guide us all, because we're all drainage authorities. We, we do the same thing in Morrison County, just how that works, how that process works. So the reason property owners haven't been notified yet is because we don't have a petition there, and that statutory process hasn't been, hasn't been prompted to start, and that's what, what prompts that, is that petition, and so that would then um, lay out that process, and Nancy, you've gone through it before, you probably are much.
Right, but, Mr. Chair, the people that are not on the ditch system are not included in that process?
Absolutely, not by the statute definition, but they, they would have easements would need to happen.
Right, but that's outside of the outlet petition.
Yes, it would still need to occur though, as we have that.
Right, but not as the ditch authority though.
No, no, but I mean, it, it would still happen. Nobody's saying that shouldn't happen, or that that wouldn't be a step in this process. Absolutely, it would, because you need to have the easements, you need to work with these property owners. Absolutely, that's, that's goes without saying, but maybe we do need to say that, that, that would of course be part of the issue, um, and part of the process of this is that you need to have drainage easements to be able to advance this. So it's kind of twofold, um, in terms of what needs to be done, but that.
Yeah, because there's two different things. Landowners outside the system and the landowners inside the system.
And they all have, or play a part in this, whether it be through the statutory ditch petition process, or through easements and flowage and what we need to do to accomplish that, so.
Have you of Morrison County talked to any of the landowners before ditch, what is it, um, 41? You know, have you talked to Josie or any of these people that have been concerned before you, you're even talking to ditch, and I think that's what Nancy's alluding to.
I think that both parties, you know, we have two different things happening here. We expect that our project is gonna be a temporary one in nature, that if the lid's project proceeds and, and moves forward, that ours goes away. But, the, the lid has a committee that is dealing with the property owners in trying to get their consent and drainage releases, and so did we. We had the representatives of the task force meet with all those property owners along the, the ditch with, with, that's not a part of the public ditch system, and, um, talk to them about what we're gonna be doing. Many of them already have signed releases. There are some that haven't. And I know the Zetas are very concerned, because they're kind of on the, the end of it, before it hits the Fish Trap Creek.
Listening to what you just told me, yours is just the first project. Your project will probably turn into the lid project then, if I'm reading you correctly, or hearing you correctly?
I don't believe, well, first of all, it can't, because all of our releases is, are specifically related to the pumping from the, from the detention basins on the south side of 203. For the lid's project, they're gonna be pumped, they need to pump from the lake. They can't be pumping from.
But they could follow the same route you're taking right now, correct?
Well, I think they have said that. They're not following the same route, but they are at some point intersecting with the route that we're using, yes.
Well, I guess, concern I have, listening, and maybe I'm a little confused, but if we would, if there was a petition done, would the assessed landowners be assessed for the cost of the petition?
An outlet petition, all costs incurred with an outlet petition are paid for by the petitioner.
By the petitioner, okay.
By the petitioner. So, meeting notices, newspaper notices.
And the landowners would not pay for any of this, if there was a petition?
If there was, right, if there was a petition, the landowners on the ditch system.
That would be my concern, because if the landowners were assessed to do this, which they'd have no choice if we, if a petition was started, um, I don't want our landowners to have to pay for that, so.
Nope, the, after the petition has been filed, all.
Okay.
All bills incurred are to the petitioner.
And Nancy, how long does that take, and what's the, the route that that is?
Um, remember when we did Bertha City, I think, Commissioner Kneizer, were you the only one, were you on the board when we did Bertha? Bertha City took about a year, um, but we had one meeting that got canceled because of a snowstorm. Um, but otherwise, it took a year, because there was the informational meeting, and then there's, there was the two hearings, and each hearing needs to be noticed by three weeks in the newspaper, three week notice to the landowners by, by a, by a letter. Um, and then getting everybody's schedules to match up, Kurt Dieter's to match up, the people that are coming in to do the, you know, all that to match up, and then there's viewers. Viewers would have to be appointed to determine the benefit, so that an outlet fee could be set. So there's all these things that have to mesh. You know, could take a year, it could take longer. Just depends if you can get viewers and.
Do you have a specific policy, Mr. Chair, then, that you follow, or do you follow just the way the statute is written?
We'll leave that to Nancy.
The, the statute.
Because, is the statute require all of those meetings?
Their statute requires two hearings, for sure. Yeah. Because Kurt sent you the ditch law part of.
I, I thought it was just the single one, but.
So, Nancy, if Morrison County started a petition, how does that affect Todd County then? Do we have to start the petition in Todd County, or does Morrison start?
Well, the petition would only be for the county ditch system. So once they petitioned outlet to the ditch system, then that starts the process.
Then we would do a petition.
Yep, well, we, that, that would be the petition.
Okay.
And then I would bring it to the board to get, to acknowledge receipt of it, and then that would initiate all the meetings that happened from then.
Mr. Chairman, it was our intention that Morrison County would initiate the petition, not private landowners in Morrison County.
That's what I was hearing, so I wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Steve, are you the one that decides when to pump and not to pump, and who's gonna turn the pump on?
Um, the, the way it will be set, much, much of it will be automatic. We'll either use transducer, or we'll use some type of a mercury switch. Uh, as the detention basins fill, it will pump. Um, there will be, uh, there would be a way if we have conditions, and we'll have to see how we work through this. On, let's say we have high flows, and the, the, the outlet ditch can't handle anything, it has to be shut down. It would be shut down, could be shut down remotely, and then it, the flow is just gonna have to go its, its natural course. Like I said, one of the things that we're, we're trying to do with this is, is de-water, de-water the, the upstream watershed so that there's capacity in there when there are bigger events to hold that, then gives time to, to discharge it when the, when the offtake ditch has already started to recede.
The thing that concerns me is, and we just seen this, just a couple of weeks ago, this heavy rain, and that's when you're gonna see more water, when you're going to need more de-watering, and we're already seeing it over capacity on these landowners already.
And, Mr. Chair, part of what, um, Steve was saying is that to, to prepare for that a bit better, the pump won't be running if it's full downstream, but what the idea is, is that you'd, you'd have more capacity upstream, so it's not pushing it regardless, and you won't pump when there's, when there's a lot of capac, when the, when it's full downstream. You wouldn't be pumping at that point in time, but you'd have space to hold it upstream.
On Morrison County's land?
Mm-hmm.
It would be private property owners' land in the watershed, is, is what it would be. A matter of fact, you know, the, kind of the dry spring that we had, I, I think you folks probably experienced that same thing through May and June, quite, quite dry. Um, one thing about that upstream watershed on Shamana, it's, it's pretty flat, and it's got a lot of the basins in it, lower points. With that dry spell that we had, most of those had very little water in them, and, and there was a pretty big event. We, we, on June 29th, got 10 inches of rain and little falls in five hours. That rain event, um, or, and, uh, uh, a, a following one, they, they received almost four inches over a period of time, and there was very little runoff because of the fact that the watershed had, had dropped, and it had storage capacity, and we're trying to, we're trying to emulate that.
Mr. Chair, I have some questions.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, thank you. Um, how large is a watershed?
There's, there's a, there's a bunch of different information out there. I believe that, um, the DN, if you'd go onto the DNR's website, you'd find that the watershed that works its way through this system is probably not including Lake Shamana, not including the lake itself, is about fifty-five hundred acres.
Okay, how many inlets are into the lake?
Those two culvert points there are the two that affect us through County Road 203. But, there's other, you know, all the development that's taken place around the lake and the township roads that serve them, there's other smaller inlets I don't even, I don't even know.
Okay, because I, I live on Lake Osakis, born and raised there. We have 11 inlets, one outlet.
Yep.
Okay, and you can watch, uh, the elevation of the lake fluctuate, and it did this spring. Um, actually, it went back down to normal levels, um, because I think the last probably 10 years has been pretty high.
Yeah, that one outlet is a, a godsend. We'd love to have an outlet.
How many acres is the lake?
Sixteen hundred.
Okay, next question. In Osakis, we have a fixed dam, okay, set at thirteen twenty-five. Who's gonna set the elevation of the lake?
Well, I, you know, that's a lid question, because we're really not working to, to bring the water level down on Shamana. We're just trying to keep things from getting worse, and so I, I don't, I can't.
As I know, because they've been fighting about it since 1860, so.
Yeah. I, I, it's a lid question, because that's what, that's what their project would be trying to do. I, I, and I shouldn't speak for them.
Okay, uh, next question on the, on the, let's see, on the culverts, ribbed or smoothbore?
The, uh, the two pipes that we have through County Road 203 are reinforced concrete pipe.
Okay, smoothbore, correct, yeah. Okay, and then is the culverts under Highway 10 adequate enough to handle what you're discharging?
You know, just, just from my own engineering experience, I don't think the Highway 10 culvert is gonna be an issue. It's a seventy-three arch. It's a very large structure. Most of the culverts through the other crossings are substantially smaller than that.
Okay.
Um, but Randy, or Commissioner Newman, we would, um, I think that would be a part of the next aspect of what we would address is, is review of all of that.
Okay. Alright, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Commissioners? I think the reason for this meeting was so we knew a little bit more about what you were doing on your side versus not being surprised on our side, so. Um, that, that's just the, the thing, and then Barb is trying to address her constituents on how, how this is being handled, and I think she was in the dark a lot about what was going on, so just wanted to get some more education on what was happening. Um, and, uh, we knew our good neighbors to the east wouldn't surprise us, so we were trying to, uh, figure that out, so.
And, Mr. Chair, that, that, like Steve said, this was only a concept that came about in mid-June.
Yeah.
Um, and so, not knowing we even have a project, or what that looks like at all, was the reason that we didn't, I mean, what have we come to talk to you about? We didn't know what it would look like. Um, and so now that we do, I, I think there are good um, questions that you have about the timelines, and about how statutorily to go through this process, and that, that's why Kurt could answer those, because that's what we all follow, but it really is about us filing that petition, and about noticing the mail, and about the drainage authority then needing to consider the pa, capacity, which is incumbent upon us to bring to you. Um, and so, he had kind of indicated to, yesterday when I spoke to him, I, I don't think it has to take a year. I, I can see how it can, just because of scheduling reasons, but um, the requirements that are laid out in statute certainly wouldn't require that length of time, um, to go, to have gone past in order for, to make this happen. But then there's also, like Barb had indicated, there's, there's flow easements, there's private property owners that aren't part of that ditch system that absolutely play a part in all of this and making that happen, and so the point here, like Steve had said early on, was just to, you know, if there's a major roadblock that we see right now um, in the way of a petition, we just wanted to kind of talk through that before, um, efforts are put forward to try to answer those questions that we all have, which would be incumbent upon the petitioner to have answered.
So, just to be clear in my mind, the draft here is just a proposal. Am I correct?
It's, it has to be tweaked, but it's, it's getting to the point where this is what we'd like to do.
Okay.
We've, we've sized our, you know, we've sized our equipment, and we're gonna run it along the right, we, we have pretty much the, the system that we can put into place and make that work. It's the property owners, the drainage easements, it's the outlet petition, it's the cost. Uh, you know, I, we, I understand you had one previously. Has that been a long time ago? Is there any idea on what kind of cost the outlet fee is, has?
That would be for the viewers to determine.
And, do you know how that's done?
They just determine how much, they do the calculations of when the ditch was originally built, um, and what your benefit would have been if it was in their system at that time, and then they adjust it for inflation, for current. Um, it's, the one in Bertha City for their ponds, I believe was like sixty-five hundred dollars for the outlet fee for their ponds, and they were brought onto the assessment roll also.
Sure.
Yesterday, when I spoke with the Mr. Chair, he did talk about, and we can call him if you want this from, because he's the, the guy who knows, and advises all of us, but, um, the, the conditions can be set, and the, the capacity can be determined prior to actually engaging the viewers, he said. There's a way to do that, so you don't incur all of that cost, but that would be something we'd need to work through, um, on how that, that logistically would work, and and what different meetings there would be with that, but he did allude to that, um, to some degree when I spoke with him yesterday, because that viewer does bring that recommendation of outlet fee.
I think some of the preliminary work that would be needed, or that the ditch authority would want, in evaluating the, the di, the discharge route, has been done, and the lid has done quite a bit of work. We haven't. I, but, but I think that they probably are willing to share that with us for, for this while they're working on their project. We've also, I've also followed up with, uh, someone that we would be utilizing if we move forward with this, and I, I think that some of that timeline could be shaved off because of the position we're in, and the amount of information there is on the outlet.
Okay, Rod, did you have something?
No, I was just sitting here calculating gallons and whatnot on it, and I think there's a lot of concerns, like Barb mentioned the size of the culvert um, at that area that you went and viewed. It would be really interesting to know what the flow capacities are on that particular culvert. And does anybody have the idea, or have any idea what the flow is right now at that Zeta location where it's dropping over that falls? I mean, it wouldn't be too hard to calculate, but it would be interesting to know, looking at that picture, if we could calculate what the flow rate is now versus what you're looking at adding to it, and what it would look like at that point.
And that's actually what they would be doing.
Right.
Their engineer would have to do that.
I mean, it'd be, it'd be an interesting picture to look at, if you're looking at three inches of water going over that thing. Are we looking at six? Because you're talking about a forced culvert coming in, not just a flow culvert coming in, so.
And I believe this spring, Joe's driveway was actually holding back the water.
I believe so, when it was, when we had those larger rains, early spring, yes.
Lou, can you, uh, maybe we've heard this before, but how does this affect the, they were federally, had some federal funding on that pond, or whatever it is? How does that affect that, or is that expired already, so?
I honestly do not know the, uh, the term of the contract that they had, or when that expires, so that would be something to ask Mr. Zeta. All I have is the paperwork is when it was approved to, uh, to be installed.
Okay. And is there any restrictions from there on? That's what I was wondering.
Well, I, I'm sure there are restrictions while it was in contract, but I don't know what, how long that contract was.
Mr. Chair, I just have another comment or question. When they were doing that, or calculating that flow rate of, of seventeen hundred and fifty gallons per minute, and looking at the size of the watershed for that particular area, did they calculate how long that would actually have to run to lower that lake at a full constant run?
Um, you know, that's a very good question, because it really, you know, it, what, what's controlling the sizing of all of this is the, the head loss from culvert one to. is the, the head loss from culvert one to the discharge point. It, you see it's forty-nine hundred feet and through some rolly, a little bit of rolly terrain. And so you have a, with a twelve inch line, the head loss through there, um, dictates the pump size. We could have, we could have got a little bit bigger pump, but the power supply through there is just single phase. Uh, and that, this is maxing out the power supply that we have available without running power in. Um, you know, so those kind of things are all kind of more controlling the sizing of this than the watershed. What it's doing though is, under the right conditions, we can get some water off of the basin. Uh, right now, there isn't anything happening that gets any of the water off of the basin.
Mr. Chair, this is lowering the lake.
But-
No, no, it's, it's off-
Are you talking about, are you talking about lowering the lake? So, from this presentation that Houston Engineering did, you guys probably were at that one. They state that if they can pump at a rate of ten cubic feet per second, in a hundred and fifty days, they can lower the lake 1.7 feet.
Hundred and eighty days?
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty days?
At ten cubic feet per second.
And they're figuring that than just the size of the lake?
Um, you guys were at that meeting, I wasn't, so.
I, I wasn't at it, but you know, that, that's, their pumping station was going to draw directly out of the lake. I do know that.
Mm-hmm.
Where this, this would be, I believe, more intermittent. Because if we have low flows, um, the, the detention basins have to fill in and then the, then the pumps kick in. Where theirs is, theirs is going to be steady max is what I think, or I shouldn't say, but I, I would suspect they're trying to at ten cubic feet per second. Ours is four cubic feet per second when it is pumping at max. With a variable frequency drive, we, we, if, if the ditch was half full, we could pump at two CFS. So, we have, we have those kind of flexibilities with how this is being designed.
Question. We talked about this, at least this board did, I think, with the meeting with the LID organization. Mill foil and other aquatic issues pumping out of that basin, if they're pumping from the lake into the basin, what's, what's the deterrent of the aquatic issues with coming into Long Prairie River, which goes into the Mississippi River?
And that's a good question. And that's a component of that LID project that would need to be addressed when and if they petition for outlet into that.
So, has this basin got any issues that we're pumping, you're pumping out of?
We're permitting through soil and water conservation. They've not raised that. That, yeah, the Commissioner Lemire is, I don't know if we've made those statements. Our permit is for six months. Our initial soil and water conservation permit here will be for six months. Um, we have to demonstrate that this is working without detriment. And then we can apply for an extension for another 12 months. Those months, tho, those time periods are going to be determined by, from when we start pumping. It won't be like if we pump 20 days in a month, you know, we get 20 days. You, once we start, we get six months. And if we only pump 30 days out of six months, we lose our, we lose our time period.
And winter months, I'm assuming you're not going to pump?
We would, the, the way this would, this will work is, um, there'll be access on these detention basins. These are submersible pumps. They're attached to somewhat like a, a dock, a, a trailer that ends up backing, will be backing down into the detention basins. Then you attach it to the discharge lines. And when it pumps, that's, that's how it, it will work. In the wintertime, it'll be disconnected, it'll be drained. And then, uh, somewhere around the spring runoff, we'd want to try to get it back up and running.
Are these pumps going to be owned by Morrison County? And they're Morrison County equipment?
Yes, yes. The, the, the one thing that the county board, Morrison County Board required though was that the operational costs, the electrical costs will have to be bore by other entities. And so the Lake Association, Scanne Valley Township, uh, the LID, those folks are, are working to come up with the funding to provide for the electrical costs.
Steve, does the DNR have to be permitted through for this? Or do you just have to go through soil and water?
Yeah, that's the way they're, we, we submitted a full permit and they're the only ones that, it's going through the TAP, but it's not, it's not requiring a permit from the DNR.
So, like on this drawing here, this existing ditch, which you're pumping to, soil and water would have authority over that?
They did.
Okay.
They did already. And they, you know, that's how they got that. Those private property owners all had to make an application to soil and water. There's like 10 of them along that stretch. They all made application to have it repaired and, and it went through soil and waters process. And that's all done.
Okay.
Lou, how far did that go into Todd County? Cause it did go into Todd County a ways.
Uh, yes, I don't know. Nancy, do you still have a map of that for me if you could put that up? Or even, even our GIS viewer would be fine if, if you'd like. We could, uh, put that. Uh, now, if you'd zoom in along Morrison Line Road, along Kevin and Sharon Rocket's property there. Yeah, right, yeah, right there. And maybe even in a little bit more. One back if you could. There you go. And yeah, view a little more to the east. There we are. Wait for it to load here and, and you'll see a little clearer picture of, uh, is that it? Okay. Well, the, the ditch on the east side, uh, on Morrison County's side, it was cleaned all the way to Morrison Line Road. Just where the O is, it's about where the, uh, where they stopped in Morrison County. And you can, you can see that, that there was a ditch there historically. Uh, I don't know if it was constructed in the early nineteen hundreds. Thank you. Okay, so we're talking right here. Uh, this ditch runs up here and then it runs into Morrison County and then across, or across Highway 10. Now, um, the ditch system doesn't end there. It actually, the private ditch system actually ran through here through Mr. Rocket's property. And about right there is where it stopped. And it was no longer a defined ditch and was just a natural flowage. So, Mr. Rocket did apply, uh, through the Wetland Conservation Act and was approved to maintain his ditch to original capacity. And that was done last year.
And from that point on, until you hit ditch 41, there's been no ditch cleaning or any other effort?
No, and there, there wouldn't be any ditch maintenance because there's no longer a defined ditch at that point. I mean, if, if there were ditching to be done in there, it would require a lot of mitigation and, and things like that to actually be ditched.
So, once it gets there, what's it do?
Well, it disperses somewhat into that wetland, but it is channelized in a lot of locations in there. And it runs down, uh, through Rita Erickson's to the west and then, and then ultimately to-
Zeta's point.
Joel and Karen Zetas, through Pulaski Road, through Smith's property, and then into Fishtrap Creek.
Where does fish, or where does ditch, um, 41 start?
Isn't it after the railroad tracks, Nancy? West of the railroad tracks?
So, all of this water sitting that's being pumped in there has to find its way through all this land to ditch 41?
Yeah, ditch 41 would start right about, right in there is where Fishtrap Creek becomes ditch 41. And you can see where it was actually straightened and ditched here.
And then it hits Long Prairie River just, uh, be west of Philbrook. And how, how long is that ditch 41 miles?
Okay, so Nancy, do you know how many benefited property owners are on 41?
I think there's at least a hundred and fifty parcels. It's a very large system.
Large system, yeah.
Um, there's only one more thing, Mr. Chair. I wanted to say, so you had said, was, was there anything that should prevent you guys from doing an outlet petition? I would say you should get these drainage easements before you petition, because if you can't get those drainage easements, it doesn't matter if we give you approval to outlet or not. So, you'd be wasting money if you go ahead with this petition and don't have the drainage easements.
Yeah, thanks. And our intention is not to harm anyone. It's just, you know, I know that people, everybody wants to take care of what they have. And there's some real devastation going on because of, you know, Lake Shamana not having an outlet. And that's all we're trying to do with some, this is really hopefully just modest type of project to try to make it from getting any worse.
And, and you're correct. It's not that we're for or oppose. We just want to make sure our landowners are comfortable with this situation. So, uh, Barb has to deal with the main part of it, so, uh, she's the one that, uh, thought we should have this meeting and discuss what's going on. So, we at least have some awareness of what this project entails.
And absolutely, Mr. Chair. That's what you should be doing. That's what we should be doing. It's all about property owners. And, and water, I think we can all agree, is one of the toughest things to deal with. And so this isn't easy, the, the situation causing it or happening in Shamana, down to the situation happening in all these property owners. Water is, is tough, tough to deal with. And we appreciate that and understand that, but-
And mother nature hasn't been too kind to us lately in that category, but we do need rain, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and it depends upon your meltdown too. And, and the spring could be big or small, so. Commissioners, any other questions? You guys have any questions of us?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you guys for coming over.
Thanks for letting us come and more to, more to come.
Answer the question. Okay, Nancy, Lou, thank you guys very kindly. Appreciate you coming over and we might have you over again if we just keep talking, so. We would just ask that you keep Chris informed and then Chris will keep, or Barb, and keep these, those two at least informed as to what's going on. Cause it is Barb's district and Chris likes to stand top of stuff too, so. Thank you.
Thank you.